Of the new strategic plan and design for the college. We're going to drill down into what does that mean for the Potaskoala campus itself? We have a high class situation here. It's still a dilemma that we have to solve in the fact that we're doing really, really well here. Business is good in Potaskoala, but as you see, our building is not elaborate. It is a bit confined in terms of its design. And we'll talk about how to expedite a process, hopefully, to add on to this as well. But we want to start by welcoming each and every one of you. Make sure you're in the right place. This is our fifth annual, and it took us all back a little bit. This is the fifth time we've engaged in this process. Our fifth annual extended campus town hall process. This is the third in our series and the last of our series. You know, you save the best for last. So we're excited about this. We changed into this format again five years ago. We used to have advisory boards for each of our extended campus locations. And what we found is they were great people and they gave us some good insight, but it was limited. We would only find the perspective of the individual serving in those. We wanted to open it up to a larger construct of individuals who live and work in those communities. Find out what's important to each of them, what the college interaction is related to that. And then open it again into more of this type of form of information exchange. We found that to be very worthwhile, and so we're excited about today's iteration. Again, fifth annual town hall. We're unveiling our new strategic plan. This is the first updated plan that we've had over our five-year period. We've just completed that cycle. I'm excited about this new vision. As you all know, this is a ever-flowing, ever-dynamic, changing environment. And we're trying to adapt to what does it mean to be an institution of higher education? Particularly a two-year technical college in this world order. And so we're going to share with you what we believe is sort of our guiding compass. Our overall North Star. Where are we going and how do we plan to get there? And then again, we'll drill down to some specificity in relationship to this Potaskoala campus. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we reiterate what's the mission and vision of the college. The mission, as you see, is to meet the technical education and training needs of students and employers in the area. That's been our mission statement since the inception of the college. It's been reinforced and redefined in terms of making sure our board is comfortable with that, our internal and external stakeholders. It's concise and to the point. That's what we do. Technical education. We want to make sure that anyone who wants to engage in workforce engagement and preparation has that access at their fingertips and in their local area. As a reminder to all of you, we serve a three-county service region. It is Licking, Knox, and Koshokton counties. And it's interesting because if you really look at those three counties in general, it's a very large geographic location. And there's complexity to it. You think about what's happening here in this Potaskoala arc and all of this new economic opportunity that's presented. And then you go all the way down and you're in Koshokton, and they're on that cusp of accessing those points. And how do we ensure that they have equal access as opposed to people that are in this right backyard? But our vision is to empower the lives of our individuals through accessible education. We aim to transform students and communities and advance regional workforce readiness. You see workforce readiness is in their front and center. That's in essence what we do. By preparation for short-term certificates, degrees, whatever individuals might need in terms of that workforce preparation. That's our bailiwick. That's where we sit in this design. When we, over the past, well, now two-year cycle, when we have literally gone out and talked to our constituent base, our current students, prospective students, our faculty, our staff, our supporters in terms of people who engage with the college, and asked them, what are the hallmarks that define Central Technical College? How would you basically describe who we are as an institution? The ethos of our campus location? Basically, this is what they told us. And not surprisingly, kind of goes back to what we just described. Focused on technical education and affordability. The one thing that we want to ensure is that no one limits their opportunities with us because of financing. We're going to work with each and every individual to find a pathway through that process. And don't be surprised by the sticker shock. Everybody sees, ooh, boy, higher education. There is payment that must happen there. There is, but there is a lot of support to help people find that process as well. Community and family atmosphere. We are small enough that we still feel that way, but we're growing. One of the things people ask, how are things in terms of enrollment? Because if we had this same forum three years ago, it was a challenging time. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. Over COVID, we lost about 20% of our student enrollment. Think about that over less than a three-year period to lose 20% of whoever you serve, however you work, wherever you do, whatever you do. Imagine 20% of those people went away. It's a rebuilding process, but it's happened rapidly for us. Over this last three-year segment, it's a quick growth arc. This spring, we were up 10% over last spring, and that's fantastic. So we're moving. We had a deficit to dig ourselves out of. We gave ourselves some time to do that. I'm pointing to David, he's our CFO. We chose over that COVID time not to cancel any programs, not to release any individuals, not to remove any of our faculty or staff. We knew we could rebuild, and that's where we've been. So that exceptional faculty and staff hallmark, we have to build that. That's the premise and the pretense of what we do. If our faculty and staff aren't strong, our student experience won't be. So we are definitively engaged in that process. We have a very unique and strong partnership with our co-located partner at Ohio State. How many of you have been to our Newark campus? Appreciate that. So the Newark campus is what we share with Ohio State. And some of you already know this, but not all of you do. There is a code mandate that institutions of higher education, if you're a regional research one institution and you have regional campuses, you have to co-locate with a technical college. There are eight of us out there that actually share something, usually in a physical facility construct. We take it at a much, much deeper level. We actually share staff. We pay for them to work for both of us at the same time. We have over 80 individuals who fit that category, who work for both institutions. Show of hands in here. How many of you actually are cost shared and work for both institutions? That would be about eight of the individuals that are in the room today. If you look at our sister schools, remember, they co-locate, but they don't cost share. The next highest is five. They have five cost-shared individuals. We have over 80. So we save the state of Ohio about $1.5 million annually by doing that. And it's also the right thing to do. So that's a hallmark. We live that every day, and it's something that we are proud of, but we have to also share a lot. Being student-centered in support services and focused on success. We've always been student-assisting. Now we're trying to move into being student-centered. That we know our students, what their challenges are, how do we engage them? Troy is here. He is leading that network. Where are you at, Troy? He's like, God, he's putting me on the spot. That's great. He's leading those efforts for the college. It is an all-encompassing connection. Remember, I told you about COVID and how difficult that was. It gave us a time, though, to do some self-reflection. What are those gaps? Where are we struggling? And we found about almost 20% of our new incoming first-year students were coming to COTC. And after a first-year experience, they were leaving with zero credits. Think about that. The time, energy, resources you have just spent, you're not seeing a return on that investment. We delve deeply into that. Why is that? What's the nature of that? And we found that many of our students were struggling with a myriad of obstacles before they stepped foot on campus. Food insecurities, lack of reliable transportation. It might be a lack of affordable housing, whatever that might be. We started to assess that before they stepped in and started to do intervention with that. What can we do with partners like Walt? With people who work in different social service constructs and agencies to help support that notion? We've already been able to dig into that 20% deeply already, and we will continue to do that. Trying to make sure a strong leadership and a positive presence within of all of our communities are critical. And keeping small class sizes with a favorable staff and student ratio. You know, there's a sweet spot there. We can't offer classes to five students. You know, that does not allow us to maintain an affordable structure. We want to make sure there's at least 10 of you in this classroom. So imagine this, I'm your instructor. There's a lot of you today. That return on investment is good. But we also want to make sure that it's small enough that we still know you by name, by face. We can engage with you on whatever you might need. But those are the most critical elements that we are dedicated to and look to enhance over the next five years. The values that, again, our constituents told us that this is how we experience you, but what we need you to continue to do. Have dependable expertise. No one's going to start coming to the college if they don't believe that there's value in what they're learning. And that value translates into opportunities and workforce engagement. Dynamic engagement, making sure that we have critical conversations like we're doing today. That it's inclusive in collaboration, that we work across lines with organizations, community supporters, whoever that might be. Unwavering integrity. We have to, at our core, be an institution who values integrity in that process. Being innovative. What's in the next cusp and arc? You know, we've become very comfortable with what we do in so many of our different areas. Many of you knew, know us in healthcare, things like nursing and sonography. And there's nothing wrong with any of that. We have to do that well. But what's the next thing? What's out there that's on the cutting edge and cusp? Some of you already know this. We launched our respiratory therapy program this year with support from our friends at Licking Memorial Hospital. Thank you very much. It was something that we know there was a great demand for. And coming out of COVID, that's not surprising. But how do we help maintain and fill the void? The other piece, and many of you remember this small group that we've heard about with Intel. I don't know if any of you have heard that that name before. We know that eventually that semiconductor industry will be in our backyard. It's already still being built. Is it going to be Intel? Is it going to be Intel and another partner? We're not sure, but we know something's going to be in that space. So we're already, we're graduating students in that semiconductor space already. I know that because my youngest son graduates in two months, and he better get his ass a job. So. And the great part about that is I make light about it. But at its core, that is our electrical engineering degree and certificate with some adaptation and specialization in that industry. So all of our students are marketable. Any advanced manufacturing, right in our backyard, and Mayor Compton knows this well. Luminate, have they hired, I think, 1,600 people? 1,600 people in two years? Two years. That one industry standard alone, which is here in Potaskoala, that's, all of our students are looking that way. That's in one-year cycle. So that's amazing, really, if you look at that, just that one contributor to our process. But we have to know how to serve them. Who are they? What do they need? What are we supplying? What do we need to adapt or re-envision? And then finally, we have to be empathetic and compassionate with the people that we serve. I just told you, learning about our students. You know, if, I'm going to pick on you, Melissa. Melissa is like, you know what? I haven't slept well in a week because I'm hopping from couch to couch to couch with friends. How am I going to really be focused on my education when I'm just trying to get through day to day and find the next place to lay my head? Let's help and work with her on that and help that process through before we put you back in the classroom. If that makes sense. So we wanted to make sure that we continue to delve into that with each of you. So that's a great construct. Now, what does that translate into kind of action steps? I have a cheat sheet here, so bear with me for here. I don't use my cheat sheet very often. That's why I'm going through here. There we go. So there are five, or excuse me, four critical goals. And the objectives under those goals of how we're going to get there. Our four greatest priorities are listed here. The first one, industry-aligned technical education has to be paramount. The things that we just talked about, making sure that we understand our industry partners and what they need. Candidly, ladies and gentlemen, some things started to go a little south for us in some standard process, things that we have done for years, but started to adapt and change and evolve in those industries. And we had to keep up with this. I appreciate our faculty members in our IT department. Information technology, you know this, that changes every day. It evolves, it enhances. We were somewhat stuck in the programming rut. We can do programming really well. If you want to know about programming, John, you want to know how to program? We can tell you that. But if you came to me and said, well, what about cybersecurity? You want to learn to program? You come see us. So we had to really kind of catch up with the times and reevaluate our curriculum and how we were offering that, what we were doing. And our faculty delved deep into that. They even said, look, we need to kind of stick, step back and get our stuff together and really be able to be in this modern industry. AI, we all have to know how to utilize that appropriately and effectively. So that's some of the pieces about those industry-aligned components that we've had to make sure that we do and do well. That student-centered support. It's working and it needs to expand. How are we offering that in all of our campus locations as well? Partnership, engagement, and collaboration. We even have some of our friends here from ETSS, Ethiopian Tabahito Social Services. They are a new potential partner, burgeoning partner with us. What are their needs? What do they want to see? What opportunities do they have? They have a large federal grant, you know, those sorts of issues. Things that we can work on together, but we have to understand each other and make a collaborative engagement together. And then effectiveness and financial sustainability. You know, I talked to you about, we want to maintain that small class size and make sure that we're connected to our students. Small is good, but too small is bad. We can't afford to offer classes that are under 10 students at any time. That's sort of a critical cutoff point. And what type of of classes are we offering? Are we offering face-to-face like you're in here now? Is this a completely virtual experience? Where do students succeed in that process? A lot of our students come to us, say, I want a virtual environment. I want to take everything online, but they're not prepared for that. That takes a very certain acumen and a readiness and a preparation to do it. And you have to be self-disciplined. A lot of our students get in it and they're like, oh, oh, this is not going as well as I thought. What do I do for this? Helping them assess that before they step foot in it is critical to it. So these are all our major goals. And let us talk to you about our priorities within them. How are we going to achieve said goals? Number one, our industry-aligned technical education. So we talked about how we have to be connected. We need to collaborate closely with local businesses and stay attuned to who they are, where they are in regional employment and development. Again, we have to learn things like illuminate. To understand that solar array and what they produce and how they produce it. We have to learn who Amgen is when they come to the table and they do pharmaceutical manufacturing. We have to learn about new, Andoril is now the newest member. And they do combat training and readiness, but they do things through drones and such. Well, where are we in that field? We have dabbled in drone, but we want to make sure, is it really that? Or is it manufacturing of these parts and pieces? So understanding who our partners are and responding to them. Making sure that, again, with healthcare, as we talked about, that we understand what's the next iteration? What's the next need? It was funny because we used to have a very strong physical therapy program at COTC. And for years, it was a program of first choice for many. Then there were changes in federal understandings of things like insurance. So if our friends came up to us like Jennifer and she said, I want to be a physical therapist. 25 years ago, that would have been great. Then there was this gap where insurance wouldn't cover or pay for physical therapy. Well, guess what that did to the market? It ruined it in many ways for a physical therapist assistant and such. That has since changed again, and that has changed once again. And now, if you want to be a true physical therapist, there's a lot of education and a lot of movement down there. If you want to be a physical therapist assistant, there's an opening in that process again. Do we need to and should we be back into that ballgame? That's the conversation we have with our healthcare partners and making sure there's a viable market here and that our career engagers can sit down with prospective students and say, you want to be in healthcare in a different way? This could really be your fit. That's why we're doing the comprehensive analysis of all of our current academic programs, making sure they're aligned, much like what we talked about with IT. Enhancing our academic programs to foster continuous quality improvement. And we have to maintain our faculty expertise. It just so happens, and we'll get into the weeds with you all a little bit. We have a unionized faculty. Our faculty are, belong to a union. We are in negotiations with them right now. We do every three-year review of our contract. Our, one of our strengths with our faculty, and one of the pieces that we're both put on as a need to address, is continual professional development. Making sure that they're out there learning what's new in their fields, that they stay attuned to it, that they're not just learning, but they're applying it. So making sure that they have the monies to go out there and find that out. Just so you all know, and again, we're getting a little into the weeds. We used to offer our faculty $350 a year to go out and do something professional. I don't think any of us could drive to Columbus for $350 a year. We know that, and we've looked at that critically with them. What do we need to do to get that up to a really reasonable mark so that both of us can gain and our students will? So that's how we're going to move into this process and make sure that we're staying within that construct. Student-centered support. We talked about this. Tailoring student resources and support systems to meet diverse needs of our student body and ensure students' academic success, psychological well-being, and holistic wellness through advertise, excuse me, advising, academic support services, scholarships, financial aid. It's the spectrum of what we're talking about in terms of student support. Students don't need a one-dimensional support system. It'd be great if I said, as Melissa, we're going to help every student find a place to live. Well, that's great. All of our students don't need that. That's not what their critical issue might be. Some of them do, absolutely. The food insecurity components that we talked about, the financial support. Making sure we know them as individuals and what they need, and we know how to help them get there. The other thing that we also have to do is put that in perspective from an academic standpoint. We have traditionally been a very much a daytime institution. We like offering our classes from eight to four. And hopefully, you can fit that in. How many of you would think that that works well with students that work? There's a problem because guess when they typically work is during the day. So making sure that it's a spectrum that meets their needs of opportunity. If we need to do more evening focus, weekends, virtual engagement, whatever that might be, that we align that with students' needs, but also, again, remember, helping them understand how to be successful in that different type of venue. Partnership, engagement, and collaboration. We have to champion the commitment to the collaborative partnership between Ohio State and COTC we talked about. Enhance collaboration and partnerships between the college-area high schools, career and technical centers, focusing on initiatives such as CEP, career exploration, and improving communication to provide students with better pathways. Okay, let's break that down. What does that actually mean? We are very engaged in College Credit Plus. Show of hands, how many of you have had a student, yourselves have participated in, had a child that did, and College Credit Plus in any way, shape, or form? Not surprising. We are upwards of over 40% of our students are engaged in College Credit Plus. So they're in high schools now taking college-level credits. We want it to be more than just taking credits. You're on a pathway, something that that credit is going to build towards success. Making sure if you're taking them, it isn't for the sake of taking credits. That may not serve you later. So if Matthew is in our CCP pathway in healthcare, that we are making sure everything that he is doing is going to get you to our certification or an associate's degree or the next iteration of a bachelor's degree in healthcare. Because credit for credit's sake means nothing. It really doesn't. It's actually somewhat dichotomous in some ways. So with this ensuring that we know what students need and how, we also have to be much more embedded with our career and technical center compatriots. Making sure that we know what they're doing and how, that we're working in connection and collaboration. We've gotten much better at that, but there's still work to do. Very important that we all conjoin on that process. Also, of course, our business and industry partners and those other support networks, individuals who work with prospective students in different ways. Social service agencies, nonprofit agencies, new American population-serving groups. Making sure that we know each other, what we do and how we do it, and can we adapt to each other's needs in that format. This is important when we look at effectiveness and financial sustainability. Here, we're talking about implementing our multi-year plan to eliminate the structural deficit that we told you about. Remember, we dug ourselves a bit of a hole that we've put aside and every year dig somewhat out of. The good news is, because of so much of the enrollment increase, we're digging out of that rapidly. But we're not done. We are actually, we're budgeting right now, looking at the budget and looking at David. We start already $500,000 in the hole. Because we put that aside and we said, we're going to start with that. We might have made $1.6 million in our additional enrollment, and that's fantastic. But you got to take $500,000 off of that at the top. So we've only really made about $1.1 million that we have to then spread about things, all these services and programs that we just talked about. So we have to be attuned to that. What's happening? What does that mean? We need to balance our College Credit Plus and our traditional student population. Adult students coming back into the process, many coming into the workforce arraignment and alignment again. We're starting to see better balance with that on both sides, increase in growth in both sides. One of the things that is very important to hear, and we'll talk about this. Mitigate the space shortage at the Potaskoala campus by exploring expansion possibilities and more efficient management of College Credit Plus space utilization with our partner high schools. Here's our dilemma here. It's a high-class problem to have, but it's a problem nonetheless. This is the smallest of our physical venues of our regional, or excuse me, our extended campuses. If you look at our Koshokton campus, it's 45,000 square feet. This is 15,000. It's one-third that size. We have eight times as many students in this building as we do in Koshokton. I just want you to, and this is not Koshokton bashing, it's just to give you a portrait of what we are seeing. Our Mount Vernon facility is two times the size of this, and we have about 150 to 160 students there. We have upwards of 450 to 500 students here at any given time. It's a wonderful problem, but it's a problem nonetheless. We are starting to turn people away simply because they'd like to be here. This is close to their, wherever they live and work. This is where they'd like to go. Newark seems to be a much further distance because it's, you know, it's another 25 minutes, miles, whatever that is. That's something you have to build into your life plan. They want to be here. They want to live, learn, and work here. How do we expand the portal and potential here? We've worked with some of our friends and colleagues already here in Potaskoala Governance. Mike makes it an opportunity for us to use some of the city hall area. We're actually outgrowing that already as well. And so how do we continue to move this forward? Each of our campus locations has a different problem. This is a high-class, good problem, but it's a problem. We have to try to solve in some way. One of the area issues, many of our area high schools would like to send more students here as well. And when they experience college firsthand on a college campus, they tend to stay and finish whatever those programs are. So that's wonderful. It's a wonderful opportunity. I could fill this entire space with high school students and not serve a traditional student. So if you were coming back to see me, my friend, and decided, you know what? I want to be a nurse. This whole governance thing is for the birds. I want to be a nurse now. So if you, you're getting close, right? So if that were to happen, we can't turn anyone away. We want to make sure this is their place in their home as well. So it's that delicate dance and that delicate balance. But we also want to make sure that we're prioritizing area residents. Southwest side of Licking County, people who are in the west side of Franklin. Remember, Licking, Knox, Koshokton are our mandates that we serve first and foremost. And we want to make sure that we're not turning students away from Licking Heights, that we're not turning away from Watkins, we're not turning away from Johnstown. We like our program responsibilities and engagement with Reynoldsburg High School. Reynoldsburg is stuck in a somewhat of a financial rut right now. They weren't able to pass a levy. So what does that mean to them about their students and their experiences? So all of that, we have to kind of factor into this physical space. And we're going to spend a little bit more time talking about that in a moment. So we talked a little bit about, here's the goals. This is our objectives. That's what we're going, how are we going to measure that? When we talk about how are we looking at each and every one of those? Obviously, first and foremost, enrollment is paramount. We are an institution of higher education. We are basically funded on enrollment. We're funded by the state on performance in that enrollment cycle, students paying tuition, fees. That is paramount to us. CCP matriculation. Remember, I told you about College Credit Plus students. Real big number for us, over 40%. Most of those students don't stay with CCP, or excuse me, with COTC after high school. They will do their credits while they're there, and we want them to complete some sort of a system, even if it's a short-term certificate. Much of that would need and necessitate a little more integration with us. Only about, I think we're upwards, are we all the way to 12% now? No, we're not. We started at 3%, went to 6%, and I think we're up to 8%. So when you talk about a large-scale compendium, 8% is not a lot. Our goal is 20%. So that's where we want to at least be. So we're going to really be working with our school partners on that. Our share of enrollments of degree-seeking students from our service area of Ohio's two-year colleges. We want to make sure that we're serving the needs of our constituents, and our pie reflects that, our piece of that pie itself. Not just getting students in seats, is retaining them and helping them be successful. There used to be a time in the state where colleges, particularly two-year colleges, were paid by butts in seats. were paid by butts in seats. So as long as you showed up, that was great for us. That was fantastic. That's really not our purpose. It's to make sure you're successful in whatever you're applying to, whatever you're doing. So now we're more funded upon success features. Do you stay? Do you commit? Do you get something tangible for your time, energy investment? Are you getting a short term certificate, associate's degree, transferring on? That's how we have to make sure we're retaining our students and helping them succeed. That's graduation rates, not surprising with what we just talked about. Our one-year post-graduation employment outcomes. So today's world order is interesting because the state has even put this forward, that they're taking a chunk of what they pay colleges and universities and saying, you know what, this chunk, we're going to parcel out by your employment rates. And this is really interesting if you think about this. This hasn't happened before. I think it's wonderful because we do really well at this. But if you think about this, it's, is it education for workforce outcome? Education for education's sake is one thing, education for purpose is another. We're upwards of 90 plus percent in this. So every one of you, if you're our students and you finish a degree, a certification, typically you're in your field of study, working full time within six months of graduation at 90% rate. So this is a good thing and something we're, particularly in the two-year college sector, this is what we do. This is what we have to do. We just do it really, really well. So that's one thing we'll measure. And then the financial viability, all the things that we talked about, making sure that we economically are good return on investment, students are, they're doing well, our faculty and staff are engaged. It's a strong financial position and right now it is, we have to sustain that. All right, that's a lot. I talked at you a lot. And that was a lot to digest, what our focus is, where we're going to be, what we're going to do. Questions or thoughts about anything that you heard so far or reactions to? Was I just that good? I would know that one of our former board members would have something to say. Steve, what can we answer for you, sir?
It's a simple question, just that. I mean, as a developer, I would think that if you had 40 some thousand square feet and you're only using a partial amount of it out in a different county, and here you have 15,000 square feet and you could use another 10,000 square feet, why don't we sublet 20,000 square feet out there, use that income to, you know, at least be able to finance the addition of another 10,000 square feet here?
Just so you know, Steve used to be on our Board of Trustees. And I love the way he thinks because we think exactly in the same way. We actually had a very, we had this presentation in Koshockton, but we talked about what are we doing to help subsidize that facility? It's exactly that conversation. We now have a developing group. We are working with a commercial real estate firm. We're trying to see, can we either flat out sell, sell that building outright and relocate? And that's not what we really want to do. We'd like to do one of two pieces. The second best option for us is to sell it and then they lease back the space that we need. But we can take that monies from the sale and put it out into some of our other needs, much like this campus. The one that we like the most is that we would condiminimize it, that we would be a partner in that process. We would own about two fifths of that building and then other partners would come in, like if you decided you would like to have your insurance firm office there, you could, you would like to have an urgent care facility there, that you would be a partner in that process. So everybody pays into that. We're looking at all three of those simultaneously and to use those savings and redistribute those into more areas of need. And Steve, candidly, we're kind of doing that too in Knox County. We have too much facility there as well. The issue, if you look about in Koshockton, we would need about 600 to 700 students at any given time to make that viable because it's so big. There aren't that many students really in Koshockton, even if we had them all and we're not here. There are, again, I could get 600 students from one school if we really wanted to delve that deeply. So how do we subsidize, to your point, what we're doing? Hold that thought because we're going to dig a little bit deeper into that, but we're with you in your vision and your thought process. Sir?
Kind of part of looking at what's matching here.
Well, it would have been best yesterday, but the one piece that we have to do is do it thoughtfully. You know, so here's the thing, my friend, we've even had a developer come and say to us, why don't we just buy this facility from you? If you work with us, we'll look to relocate, build something new. The problem is in this market, I could probably sell this building, David, what, three, four million dollars, maybe? Maybe? Maybe, let's even say five million dollars. Problem is, we're actually renovating a building that's 6,600 square feet. It's like a big house. Right now, the price tag of that is over $3 million to renovate a 6.6 thousand square foot building. The cost of doing construction and design and development right now is crazy. So we have to do this thoughtfully in the right manner, if that makes sense. If we actually sold this outright, I couldn't afford probably to rebuild what we currently have in today's market. So adding onto the site, it's also, we'd rather do that because it's in a great location. I mean, this is a very visible, very easily accessible site. People drive by it every day. And now that it looks more like a college, we appreciate that and thanks for the renovation for Brian and his team. We get a lot of notoriety of just that by visual acuity. So the short term answer is it's not going to happen overnight, but it is going to be one of our priorities. That's why it's in the strategic plan. Sir?
Not specific to maybe COTC, but just wondering, post-implementation of the short term certificate concept, original intention was building blocks to help get to a graduation rate?
Yes.
And/or some accomplishment along the way? Has that played out to be true or is that great on paper and not so great in practice?
No, Scott, I appreciate that. Scott Ryan's from the Department of Development as well, and that's a very good question. What we have found too is right now, students' preference is exactly that. I want to get in. I want to do something rich and purposeful, but I want to get out as quickly as I can. So if I can get a short term certificate that gives me entry and portal, or I can stack them into something, that is, right now, our growth arc is probably predominantly in that area. It really is. It is. And so that has worked well. And even when we're talking about, we had a whole discussion about, we have a health pathway that is a little bit more amorphous. It isn't nursing, it isn't, it's health. But it's a stackable certificate process. So I can get a certificate and phlebotomy and so I can go out and draw blood. So I can start doing that and work while I'm doing that, but then I can also get my EKG certification on top of that. And now I can do that as part of that as well and they're going to pay me more for that. And ultimately I might want to compile all of this to be a nurse. And that's the way that process was designed and that's the way it's working. So yeah, I appreciate that. The shorter term is the more, right now, attractive route for many because the workforce right now is still good. It's still hot. But I want to get into it and do well. I want to make it a career portal, not a job portal, if that makes sense. I've tried to convince my middle son that that's what that is supposed to do. Having 37 jobs in three years is not a career pathway. So.
That sounds really hectic.
It does, thank you, my friend. It does. It does. That's why, remember, the youngest one that we talked about doing the engineering program, and that's a short term certificate. That's a one-year certificate, but he can go and walk out of that and he likely will be making 25, $30 an hour with a one-year certificate. And that's a good thing. And he does plan to finish the associates as well, but he wants to work while he's doing it. So appreciate that question. Other thoughts before we delve in a little bit deeper? Sir?
Well, some students were worried about the Department of Education. That's how it would fit.
Yeah, so there's a lot of federal activity, as you would see across the spectrum, and the reduction and potential elimination of the Department of Education is one of them. There is an expectation that you delve deeper into your state level connection. Now, that's a lot for the states to absorb quickly. The good news is higher education and the Department of Education here within the state work fairly well across the lines. And the Department of Education has been much more engaged now in workforce preparation. So that aligns well together, particularly at the two-year sector. So we're watching it and understanding who do we turn to for what? But right now, we're all at a pretty good place, but we're watching a lot of developments at the state and federal level to make sure what we're, the one thing that we've said very loudly, it can't impact federal assistance for things like federal financial aid. If there was ever even a stopgap time of that, that could eliminate the portals of higher education, particularly at the two-year sector. Almost everyone is on financial aid of some measure or support. And it's paramount to help people get through that process. And so far, there hasn't been any disruption to it, but we're watching it closely. Appreciate that. All right, I'm going to jump a little bit here. And this is where we started and Steve has already started and primed some of this discussion. To mitigate the shortage, space shortage here at the Pataskala campus by exploring expansion possibilities and more efficient management of College Credit Plus space utilization with our partner high schools. So are questions for you, some of the things, what's happened and what's next? Recent College Credit Plus decisions made to address our space issue. We capped our Reynoldsburg High School on the maximum number of incoming students into our computer information program, no more than 40 new students each year, which is a two-course section. We don't want to lose partnership with Reynoldsburg. We love them. They are a fantastic group to work with. It's just, again, if we could make this an annex of Reynoldsburg, the amount of people and students that could utilize. We discontinued our health and wellness pathway. No new students being admitted by our fiscal year '25, '26. We end our dedicated sections to senior CCP students in digital media design. We're re-engaging now with Licking Heights and Watkins High School to assess how to best collaborate across their multiple school needs. And this is one of the things that we're looking at, is to conduct a capital campaign specifically for Pataskala within the two to three-year construct. One of the things that we need to do is get our ducks in a row. And there are things that are happening on our Licking, or New York campus as well. One of the things, I know Jennifer Roberts, she's involved with us, I mentioned that we're renovating what was a 6,600 square foot building. Evans Foundation was kind enough to give us access to that for a whopping $1 a year. That's the best deal you're ever going to get. But it needed to kind of be revamped. It's going to be really the home for our police academy programs, our first responder networks. It's fantastic. It's wonderful. But that alone was a $3 million renovation. So we got to get stuff like that squared away before we go knocking on doors and saying, would you like to help us build a bigger capacity here? The capital campaign here, we think, would also be different than many of our programs have been very individual specific. So I would come to you and say, we have had such a good working relationship and I know you supported us in the past, would you love to give me $7.8 million? We don't usually ask for that much, but a lot of individual base. We believe here, we also want to expand into more corporate and industry bases, talking to our partners at that level as well. Obviously, before things transpired with Intel and they've had to delay some of those things, knocking on doors of new partners would be important to us as well because we are serving in their backyard. This institution component, our Pataskala campus, is the closest institution of higher education to the fabrication center in all of the state of Ohio. So it would behoove both of us to build a capacity as best we can. So this is some of the things that are already happening. We wanted to share this with you. Some of the things that you heard from Steve as well at our other campuses have potential to impact this too. We're not going to thank you yet. Go back to this one. So we appreciate, and Steve has already put that out there, can we work with some of our other extended campus locations to shrink our footprint and utilize some of that cost, other cost savings or revenue enhancement to put back into this location? We're with you. That's one of the processes we're looking at right now and that could be a very viable network. It's interesting because we're working, how many of you know Shea Hess Real Estate? Probably many, if not all of you in here. They serve predominantly this, this region, but they also have worked within the Koshockton network. So they are representing us there and they are banging on a lot of doors on our behalf. So we're ready and excited about where that's going to take us, but we need to see it happen to then transfer some of those funds. Sir?
With the location, prior location, which is, I guess, is big a facility that you could build here that would satisfy what your needs are?
Yeah.
What could actually fit here? You guys only, you didn't buy the property beside, or even partial that?
So Ben asks a very good question and you happen to be sitting next to our director and superintendent of facilities. So Brian, how would you respond to that?
So when we did the expansion that a couple of years ago, we had asked the design team to look at that very, answer that very question. And the addition ended up being 14,000 square feet. So again, like a very, we're sitting here, you know, 15,000 square feet, so almost doubling the footprint of the building. That's assuming we keep it all on one level. We did not want to look at, you know, the multiple floors. But we also needed to make sure we kept enough acreage and parking. But that's, that's what drove the ultimate design for the addition.
I appreciate that. So we can double the size of this with our current vision plan. We haven't really even costed that process out, have we, Brian?
If I recall, it was around 12 million?
A mere $12 million and we could kind of double the expansive while we're looking here. And that was in current funds, correct, in terms of looking at that?
It was added on to your existing structure.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
What'd you say, the total was about 30,000 square feet?
Yeah, it would literally been almost double what we have today. And the one thing that, when we designed that, that look, we wouldn't have to close any of our operations. It would be noisy and it'd be dusty, but we would continue to offer all of the classes that we're currently offering while that expansion was happening. The other thing we have to factor in is parking. You know, that's the footprint, it's only so big, so, and we can only accommodate so many at any given time, but that should still suffice for that kind of expansion. And that would eliminate a lot of pressure instantly. But then candidly, I think we'd be probably having this discussion the next year of, hey, this is great. We now have 750 students here. I could serve 1,200 if we were, so, but hey, let's, one step at a time. But we have at least had drawings and, and it could work for us quickly.
Well, I mean, certainly think your location is obviously key here and you're, and that's what you've already had in this part of the community and, you know, Intel and everything that's New York of us and that 161 corridor, you know, you could have your own little fence between here and Franklin County and.
Yeah.
Certainly serve Licking County because it's obviously beyond.
Yeah, this, this is at the epicenter of growth and development. There is no if, ands or buts. And I will give my predecessor, Dr. Bonnie Coe, a lot of pat on the back to have the vision and foresight to kind of see some of that. We all knew it was growing. We didn't know it would be this dramatic and this quickly. So again, would love to, if I could swap my two facilities and literally put it on a little trailer and haul my Koshockton one here and take this one and put it in, that would be ideal. It's not very feasible, but that would be fantastic. If we had a 45,000 square foot facility here, we'd be rocking and rolling. We're rocking and rolling as it is, but we rock and roll a lot of people elsewhere. So I appreciate the questions and the thought process. Mayor?
So, you know, I spoke to you one time, we talked about, you know, going up.
Yes.
And you kind of mentioned that too. I mean, maybe the new building, I don't, I'm not sure of the engineering, engineering structure of this building, but obviously the city, I've kind of bounced that off of them as a time, you know, to maybe go up with the new facility. But that's obviously an option. So that's my first comment. My second comment, I'm going to keep bragging, okay? You've heard me tell you personally and on the other meeting, I can't remember where I was. This is working. My son came out of the army after eight years and several tours overseas. And here's two people that believed in him. The Chillicothe Police Department paid for my son to go to COTC because they already believed in the program. He went through the exhilarated police program to give him some experience in the army. And unless, is that a two or three month, it went so fast. You remember how, is that a two or three month program?
It's a three month experience, isn't it, from completion, start to completion?
Three month?
We're going to say two and a half, my friend. Two and a half.
It flew by, okay? So the day passed, it passed, they swore in because they needed a police officer, I mean, the legal before graduation.
Appreciate that.
But here's a kid that's, but now has a, he's married, has a house, has a full-time job. It works.
I appreciate that very much.
And of course, you know, this is, it works.
Bravo. I appreciate that, my friend. Well done, well done. One of the issues, and I'm glad that, Mike, you kind of brought this forward, and I kept calling Bart Ben, I don't know why, but one of the factors too that limits us here is because of the size limitation, it's the number of programs that we the number of programs that we can offer to completion here. You know, we would like to bring our engineering program to completion so that people don't have to start here and then finish in Newark. We have our nursing program out here, we'd like to bring several more of our allied health right here physically so you can start, but that takes the space infrastructure. We have a lot more than we used to have. And, you know, our friends at, if there's anybody from Licking Heights here, we love you, and you guys have been great, they used to let us use their lab space. We didn't even have our own labs here. So, and you can imagine how many college students want to go take science classes back in high school. Not many. So we were able to build that infrastructure here so we can support some of it. But we've just, again, run out of space to enhance that full spectrum. So there are about five academic programs we would like to bring here to completion, but we need that physical space to do so. But it would enable us to enhance that process. The other thing that's really very interesting and intriguing about the Pataskala Campus, it's our most diverse center of all of our campus locations. It's about sixty-two percent non-majority individuals that attend here, and that's fantastic, but they like it here. This is where they're comfortable, and they, it feels like home. They don't necessarily want to get up and go to Newark. That's another twenty-five-plus miles and time onto that, and it's in places that they're not as familiar with. This is home. So if we can continue to expand that, that portal of entry, it helps everybody, everyone. And we are working. We're working on it. We're not sitting idly, but it's, every day, our frustration is we can have more here if we just had more space to utilize in that. Other thoughts or perspectives? Does this make sense? Yes, my friend, as a COTC alum? Yes?
Yes, so, I've recently been looking into going to, going to the Columbus College of Art and Design. They have programs there that are similar to the digital media program at COTC, like the Dr. Designing stuff. I was talking with Dr. Barry here earlier about if the college transfer credits could be, what kind of process, if it's going to be smooth, that could transfer over to CCAD? Because their, their tuition per semester is over twenty thousand dollars. It's like, you could buy a car with that kind of money. So I, I would like to, I would like to enroll in that, in that other school, but I'd like to be required to be there for as few years as possible before graduating. So that's what our college, college rates could come along in.
Love that you brought that forward. Here's the one piece, we're going back to this partnership engagement collaboration. This is a very unique time to be in higher education because there's a lot of people fighting over a finite amount of resources and student population. And if you think about it, remember, the state of Ohio has a declining population, but central Ohio does not. Central Ohio has a growing arc, which is fantastic, but also, this is the other factoid I will share with you. The largest concentration of higher education institutions in the country is in Boston. The most amount of higher ed, the second most is Columbus, Ohio. So the second highest concentration of higher education in one regional area is right here. And that's a good thing because it gives students a limitless possibility, but everybody's kind of jockeying a little bit too. What we've learned in many ways, the more you collaborate and connect for things like, hey, let's make sure that we have credit transferability that's seamless, and that private institutions have gotten onto this bandwagon much more quickly, candidly, than some of our own state-to-state institutions. So CCAD has come and said, what can we do to guarantee these transfer pathways voluntarily? We don't have to do it by mandate, but it behooves us to do it because we want more of your students to think about us as a viable option. And some of them are even scholarshipship and incentivizing. Come be a part of this experience. And CCAD is progressive. We like them. We like all of our partners. But they, they are very progressive in their thought process. So we will continue to look at that transferability. It's funny, our provost is here, he's been engaged in some major, interesting collaborations. We had Mount Vernon Nazarene. They came to us and said, we have students that go through a criminal justice program, but they don't have any pragmatic experience in criminal justice. Theoretical knowledge, they get a bachelor's degree, but they go out into the market, and much like you heard from Mayor Mike, they aren't ready to be hired in a police department. They are actually working with us now to send their students, they're paying for their students to go through a police academy program. It's just starting. We're just starting to build that, that relationship. But having pragmatic experience that is very portable into a workforce environment, it's one thing to have theoretical, it's another thing to have experiential. And to make sure that their students are ready to be hired and picked up in that process, that's a great win-win proposition for us. It also helps us build more opportunities on that Knox campus location. So we're having some really unique conversations. CCAD is certainly one of those. It is a really good time to be in the two-year system. Right now, we're trying to make sure that we maximize that fluid capacity for all of our students. Thank you for bringing that up. Other thoughts or process pieces? Sir?
I had a quick comment, just to speak to the diversity of the campus here at Pataskala. Just not long ago, I had one of our success coaches check into a country of origin services. It's a semester of research into twenty-six different countries.
Twenty-six. So Mark, just so you know, Mark is our lead academic advisor here, so he's working with students across the spectrum. So if you think about that, imagine, have we had this conversation thirty years ago? I guarantee you, that would not have gone beyond single digits. But now where we are in this immense growth and development, but are we prepared to help students from all those diverse perspectives, with all those different backgrounds and education experiences, to find their pathway through here? That's something we're learning, and we're trying to get better at and ensuring that we have the infrastructure to support. One of the things that we talked about, I think, here last time when we were all together, were issues of like ESL English as second language opportunities and options. They're still too limited. Now, we're working on a couple of different factors and pathways on that to bring sort of a more advanced structure where it's not just basic conversation and such. This is how do you translate language into more technical prowess? So if I'm writing papers, if I'm presenting to large groups, what, how do we translate that capacity? And really, a more expedited second, third generation of ESL type of work. So we're looking at three partners for that right now, and I'm hoping that within months, we might be able to have something on the table for that. So thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. That's, it is a beautiful place to be because it is a very intriguing place to be, and we want to maximize that process. Sir?
Hello, my name is Omer. I'm actually from Aspire ESL Department.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm from CTEC of Licking County.
Appreciate that.
I just want to thank you very much for allowing us to use your space. Because currently, we are teaching ESL classes here in this building, and a lot of our students are actually going to COTC after they finish our ESL program, so thank you very much.
Oh, I appreciate that, my friend.
I appreciate that our collaboration.
They are our lead partner in this process, and as we talked about, three different partnerships, they are the primary in that. And it's getting to that next iteration and that more advanced and mature opportunity. But this is working, we just need to make it better, if that makes sense. So I appreciate that, and thank you for coming. This, we have that opportunity at all of our campus locations. It is paramount here. It is absolutely paramount. That's, the other thing, just so you all know, we also are working in things like placement through GED, making sure that people can even get that first pretense at these locations as well. And that helps them in that pathway too. So it is a myriad of support and network systems. It's just a lot of moving parts that have to be integrated. And we love that people even come to ask us, they're like, can we borrow your space for? No, we just don't have any. I'd love to give you some, but we just don't have much space to give. If you remember, this used to be the Grand Hole, Grand Host East Ballroom. And so it was one of the largest physical centers to have like a group gathering and meeting space. We had to kind of undo that simply because we had so much need to parcel that up for classroom delivery. We'd love to bring that back. And it's funny because, and Bart not asking Ben, I don't know where the hell I got Ben from, that in the design, we had a larger multipurpose space that we could use for classrooms, but then can open it up for a large-scale event. So it would bring back some of that possibility to the community as well. So we'll see if we can get that done too. All right, so I've kept you for the full hour. The only thing that you are responsible for doing is continue to think about some of what we shared together. If you think about other opportunities, interactions, grants that we could write jointly, programs that we could look to sponsor, things like building and making money, like Steve said, that's a good thing. We will be, again, designing a capital campaign eventually, if necessary. If we have a large corporate entity come to us and say, you know what? We've got twelve million dollars, and we want to expand this, and this is our only building that is not named. So just something to put in the back of your mind, you know, that has a nice ring to it. Your last name could be on the start of this building. But that's, it really is an opportunity. We parcel out our facilities pretty well, name individual classrooms, name entrance ways, name the buildings, whatever those are, because that is a great tribute and testimony to the people who help us build that capacity. We love Pataskala. We just need to do more with you. That's the biggest issue we have. High-class problem, but a problem nonetheless. But our guarantee to you is we will continue to try to delve more into the campus, more into the community, more serving the basic needs across the spectrum. We appreciate each and every one of you being a part of this today. The only other thing you have to do is take one of Grandma Barry's secret recipe cookies. That's the only thing. You have something, you think, oh, please, my friend?
Sure, absolutely. When you're talking about the partnership and engagement and collaboration, I do, I do want to highlight that ETS-S.
Yes.
UPTO, IDO Social Services, one of the African immigrant service organizations. So we do have a comprehensive ESL program. So, you know, if, and also, we have, and we have very qualified instructor, yes, an instructor.
Appreciate that.
Nationally, internationally recognized.
Thank you.